Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If you please remain standing, I'd like to ask Brian Grubbs to please provide an indication for this evening's meeting. Currently, the scheduled person could not make it. Hopefully, they didn't have an emergency.
Thank you. Please bow your heads. Heavenly Father, we thank you for bringing us together this evening. I just pray that you guide each of our thoughts and actions and our minds to make the best decisions for our community. I pray blessings over not only our community, but our nation, Lord. I just pray that you bless the leaders to bring us all together, Father, and really take good strides in togetherness. Father, I just thank you again. I pray these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Brian. You had about 30 seconds' notice to prepare for that.
He did great.
That was impressive.
So, to start the meeting, will you please take the roll?
Abrams.
Here.
Menager.
Here.
Grubbs.
Here.
Lewis.
Here.
Dole.
Here.
Maynes.
Here.
Galindo.
Here.
Abrams.
Abstain.
Menager.
Yay.
Grubbs.
Abstain.
Lewis.
Yay.
Dole.
Yay.
We also have executive session meetings for January 16th, 2018.
So moved.
Second. Will you please take the roll?
Galindo.
Yay.
Abrams.
Abstain.
Menager.
Yay.
Grubbs.
Abstain.
Lewis.
Yay.
Dole.
Yay.
Maynes.
Yay.
Earlier this week, and I believe actually last week, the purchase orders report was sent out, we need to approve the purchase orders.
So moved.
Second. Please take the roll.
Abrams.
Yay.
Menager.
Yay.
Grubbs.
Yay.
Lewis.
Yay.
Dole.
Yay.
Maynes.
Yay.
Galindo.
Yay.
That brings us down to our invited visitors and guests. Shannon, would you like to announce our first one?
Unfortunately, Jim Kennett is not here. I don't know if he had an emergency.
We had Jamie Johnson, but I don't see her either.
Well, we have Brian McMurdo. He is going to come speak regarding the Community Service Day, September 15th. Mayor, thank you. City Council, it's an honor to be here with you guys. Chief Lindsay, Chief Person. Longtime Harrison resident, first time, I think, in this room, so.
Welcome.
I'm very excited to be with you guys tonight and to have an opportunity to share a very exciting event that we are, the Greater Harrison Rotary is organizing. We're calling it the Day of Service, and it's going to be on September 15th, 2018, so September 15th of this year. And what we're going to do is we're going to bring together service groups, all service groups, churches, schools, businesses, bring everybody together in the Harrison area, the Greater Harrison area, for this Day of Service. And in the days and the months following September 11th, 2001, I think we saw something extraordinary. We saw Americans from all walks of life coming together. They were showing that they were there for each other. We saw neighbor helping neighbor and acts of kindness in the true spirit of service. So, September 15th, which is the Saturday after September 11th, we are going to unite the residents of Greater Harrison area, students, employees, business owners, church parish members, to embody the spirit of service in honor of September 11th. So, I was asking of you, is one, just for your support and that you would partner with us. We are going to continue to plan this event. We would like you to help us in spreading the word. I believe it's a great thing for our community, the Greater Harrison area. We'd also like to invite you to a planning meeting that we're having, and it is tomorrow. Sorry for the short notice, but this is one of several that we're going to have tomorrow evening, 6:00 PM, at The Coffee Peddler. Tomorrow night, 6:00 PM, at The Coffee Peddler. So, Wednesday, February 7th. So, we are extremely excited about this event. We're getting a lot of excitement. We've talked with this city, his city, the Harrison Ministerial Alliance, very much on board, and so, very excited about it, looking forward to it. We believe that this is a way to honor those who we lost on September 11th, and in a way to reclaim, really, that spirit of unity that was so evident right after the attacks. So, thank you very much for your time. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Brian, thank you for being here. You know, I watched you grow up, and this is awesome to see you standing in this room with the type of leadership you're displaying by taking the laboring ore on this project. And congratulations on doing that. Thanks a lot, and I love this. Thank you.
Brian, tell these folks what your day job is.
I am operating manager at the County Communications Center, which is the 911 center in Grand Canyon County. So, I have the honor of being in Harrison about 30 years, so I was out of Harrison for about 10 years, but when we moved in, so I've been in Harrison for about 30 years, but it's an honor to be able to get to serve the community, you know, as a 911 in that aspect. Although, as a part of Harrison, you have 911.
I'm a fellow Rotaryian with Brian, and he's our secretary, and after every meeting, he puts out detailed reports.
Amazing minutes, yeah.
And if I ever forget something, I know it's in that report. He does a fabulous job, and he and a couple of other of our Rotarians are taking this on as a project for our club, and they're just doing a marvelous job with it. They've got the school district on board, and as he said, all kinds of agencies are on board with this. So, the meeting tomorrow night is to discuss what kind of projects do we want as a community to involve ourselves with, and it can be dozens of different kinds of things, from helping seniors clean up their properties, to, you know, building a piece of equipment in a park, or sprucing up a park, or sprucing up roadways. It could be anything. So, whatever people come up with groups, I know the high school students and athletes are coming up with things, so it's going to be a very exciting day, and I want to thank, just, I wanted to thank Brian because personally, he does so many things for our Rotary Club that I just want to say thanks to him for that as well, so.
Next item on this evening's agenda is request, do not request, a hearing by the Ohio Division of Liquor Control on a new liquor license for Jacks Investments III LLC at 1195 Stone Drive. There's been a lot of communication go out about this liquor permit request. Does anyone desire to have a hearing?
Mayor, we talked about that at Law Committee tonight, and I think the sense of our committee was that we want to request a hearing only because we don't know how many of these liquor licenses are available, and since the party that applied for the liquor license isn't going where they're going, we don't want to end up, the fact that we're being notified of it, notwithstanding their inability to purchase that property, we don't want to be in a position of being bound by not objecting or not requesting a hearing. And that may be the impetus to push the applicant either going to another building or withdrawing the request.
Okay, so we have a motion then to request a hearing. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second that we will request a hearing. Please take the roll.
Menager.
Yay.
Grubbs.
Yay.
Lewis.
Yay.
Dole.
Yay.
Maynes.
Yay.
Galindo.
Yay.
Abrams.
Yay.
So, we will submit the paperwork to request a hearing, and when the date is set, everyone will be notified. Next item is approval ordinance designating the Harrison Community Improvement Corporation as an agency of the city and authorized execution of an agreement with the agency.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Do we have any discussion on this item? Please take the roll.
Grubbs.
Yay.
Lewis.
Yay.
Dole.
Yay.
Maynes.
Yay.
Galindo.
Yay.
Abrams.
Yay.
Menager.
Yay.
It'll be ordinance 1 to 2018.
Do we have any items to add to the agenda this evening? That brings us down to reports. I have nothing specific to report on. The city is going into a couple of new things right now. One of them is the CIC, which will, the partnership between the city and the CIC gives us a lot of ability to spur economic development in the area. We also are in the process of reviewing through Hamilton County, and then internally, the revolving funds that were supplied by the Community Block Development Grant, or HCP, yeah, anyhow. We have about $70,000 that will go into our downtown business district to improve the businesses down there, and those are low-interest loans, and there's a process that we have to go through. Late in March, we'll be reviewing the applications, probably with awards occurring in April. So, the city's doing a lot on the economic front right now, and these two tools are going to go a very long way and last a very long time in the city, probably, hopefully, past any of our tenure. And there'll be things that people will look back and say, it's a really good tool that we have to use now. So, that's all I have to report this evening. Does Law Director have a report?
Mayor, Members of Council, I have no report this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Abrams, do you have a report this evening?
I do, Mr. Mayor. Thank you. I want to thank Brian McMurdo for coming out here and sharing with us this Day of Service. I know, I think I can speak for all of us. We're looking forward to partnering with you on this day, and I always think it's a good thing to give back. Economic Development Committee met tonight. We have a few items here to discuss. Discussions continue with a small North Carolina company that's considering locating to Harrison. A new, sturdier, temporary Dunkin' Donuts entry sign has been installed at Progress Way to replace the temporary banner that kept falling down. This sign will be replaced when the corner lot at the intersection is developed. You'll have to check out the newly remodeled Wendy's Dining Room that is scheduled to open this week, possibly as early as tomorrow, if final inspection is passed. The Napa Auto Parts Store has moved across the street from its old location to the current location in the old motorcycle shop, and as you can probably tell from driving by, steel for the new St. John's Church is now being erected. Two pieces of February legislation are being brought forward to enhance our economic development efforts. As you just heard, we just approved the CIC, which is very exciting, and will enable new nonprofit corporations to act on the city, act on behalf of the city for economic development deals to move at a faster pace. The revolving loan fund application deadline was January 26th. There were six downtown property owners that picked up applications, mostly for facade improvements. The deadline for their submission to the county is February 9th. The next meeting for economic development is Tuesday, March 6th, at 6:00 PM. REC also met last month. We're off to a great start. Our first program is our Easter program, which is March 31st this year, from 8:00 AM to 11:00 AM here at the community center. The Boy Scout Troop 408 will have their pancake breakfast, running up from 8:00 AM to 11:00 AM. The games start at 10:00. The egg hunt starts at 11:00. And of course, we'd like to thank Legacy Church for partnering with Recreation Commission again for this fabulous event. We've set the dates for our summer concert series. The first one is going to be June 12th, and we're going to kick it off with the menus. And of course, we want to thank FCN Bank for donating $5,000 again towards our summer concerts. Field assignments were made on January 29th. The field assignment scheduling was attended by Harrison Girl Softball and St. John's. The next recreation meeting is February 15th, due to Valentine's Day, Ash Wednesday, 7:00 PM in our executive conference room. And our first district event this year is the Food Truck Rally on May 19th. If you are interested in volunteering at any of our events, city or district, please email me. Of course, I'd like to congratulate and welcome our two new Harrison officers to the force. We're excited for them to begin employment here, and of course, congratulations to Sergeant Ramsey on his promotion and Lieutenant Sider. Kudos to our fire department for rescuing that canine from the water and ice. I'm sure most of you saw that on social media, and if you haven't, go to our City of Harrison Government page. It was pretty, we're very happy. That was a happy, positive ending to that story. And a shout out to our water department for the quick repair of water main leaks and breaks. If you see water running into the street, or if you don't have any water at your home and you've paid your bill, right? Please call our utility department. If it's after hours, call our police department non-emergency number 367-3715, and they will relay the message to the water department. And of course, our streets department is gearing up for yet another snow ice event. Please stay off the roads if possible. If you must drive, please do not pull out in front of the snowplow. Slow down and use caution while driving. Stay tuned, of course, to our city Facebook page for more photos, videos, and tips from our city council ride-along program. Mike Maynes rode along with Cam and saw firsthand what a process it is to clear roads, right? I'm sure Mike will talk more about that.
It's fun, and I learned a few things about our wastewater sewer that we're working on in that department, so, yeah.
Good. I'm sure we'll hear all about it, right? And I attended Harrison Chamber of Commerce After Hours event at Freddie's on January 8th. Mike Maynes and Urbano Galindo also attended. These events are exactly what we should be doing here as council members, being involved in the community. The next after-hours event is Monday, February 12th, from 5:00 to 7:00 PM at Market Street Grill. And on national news, I was honored to be invited to President Trump's speaking event yesterday at Shefford Corporation. As you may have heard on the news, the topic was tax reform. Shefford Corporation gave each employee a $1,000 bonus check, and it was wonderful to hear from each employee how exactly they planned to spend that bonus. That's all I have. Actually, you know what? One more thing. We're real, I know. I'm sorry, I have a long report today. Well, when I missed the last meeting, you know, couldn't help it, we were sick, I've got a lot to report. Anyway, we're really excited about this training here. Hamilton County Police Association and Western Hamilton County Fire Chiefs Association, we are bringing the movie Dinkellar to the Harrison Activity Center. Basically, what it is, it's a one-hour, 21-minute documentary film about officer-involved shootings. It's an outstanding training opportunity for all Hamilton County active and retired law enforcement, fire officers, and their family members, and community members. The HCPA and Western Hamilton County Fire Chiefs Association are sponsoring the training. The topic of officer-involved shootings is reshaping law enforcement and public safety practices all across this country. It is free. You have to RSVP. We're going to put the flyer up on our Facebook page. This is going to be shared all over the place. Again, Wednesday, March 7th, from 7:00 to 10:00 PM, right here at our Activity Center. So, I'm going to pass these down, and if all of you could take one and either scan it in and email it in to anybody that you know, share it on social media when we do, we'd appreciate it. We'd like to pack the house. It holds, the Activity Center there holds 770 people, and I would love to see, standing room only, of course, all within fire code. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Cindy, we're glad to see that you're healthy and didn't bring that nasty, whatever it was in here and spread it around.
Well, I'll tell you, Mayor, I'm never sick, so for me to be sick, like, it was terrible.
Well, I'm thankful that you didn't share it with us, and that I'm glad to see you've recovered.
Thank you.
This year, it's been particularly bad with the flu and other associated illnesses. I don't think that was flu.
Bill, what was the score?
Yeah.
You gotta, you gotta, you gotta feed a fuel, you gotta fuel the flu. You gotta.
Yeah.
So, anyhow, thank you for the report. Mr. Menager, do you have a report this evening?
I do, Mayor. The Law Committee met this evening. Shannon discussed with us the status of the master plan. We do have Steering Committee meeting coming up on February 15th. Prior to that time, the final, well, it's not the final product, but the draft of the actual plan is circulating now. Members of Council should get a copy of that here within the next few days, and then we'll probably get through it before the Steering Committee meets, and then at that point, they'll discuss it, make any proposed changes they have. Then, again, it'll come back to the committee, or there'll be a public meeting, I guess, once we make those changes that the Steering Committee looks at. That's going to take place on March 15th, and the community then will be invited to make comments and discuss the master plan, and then whatever they come up with, we'll go back to the Steering Committee, and those revisions will be made. So, this process is moving, and it's moving rather quickly at this point, and we're looking forward to seeing at least this first draft when we get it in a couple of days. I understand that from Shannon, that it's concise, it's in readable, understandable English, not a lot of legalese or technical stuff that, you know, that people can't really understand and wrap their hands around. So, hopefully, we'll get that, and we'll report on that further in two weeks when we have our next meeting. We also had a discussion tonight on some pending litigation matters. That was handled in executive session, and we'll have more to report on that later. The Inter-Community Cable Regulatory Commission, it had its annual meeting, January 25th of this year. Typically, they meet quarterly. I'm the Harrison representative. Not much to report on that. They've got $565,000 bucks in the checking account right now. Brad Stapleton, who's been the longtime executive director, is stepping down in June. He's going to be replaced by Tim Newman. They also added Paul Schmidt to the Executive Committee now as the new treasurer, and Linda Childs will be the first vice chair. Bill knows, our township trustee out here currently is chairing the group. I'll be attending the OKI meeting on Thursday. That will be the first time I've attended one of those meetings. I did attend some with Randy in the past, but, you know, it's going to be kind of an exciting thing for me, that I'm looking forward to that, and bringing again counsel a report on what happens at that meeting on Thursday. That's all I have to report tonight, and it's all yours.
I'm going to try to make this short as possible, but I also want to thank Brian for stopping by. You know, it's those events that we've been talking about, well, I've been talking about for four years, to bring the community together, whether it's service projects or the Recreation Commission events, what have you. That's what makes our community great. And for the Rotary Club and other ser, excuse me, other service organizations to come together for one great cause, and that's our community, it's real inspiring, but it's a great example for our youth. On that note, you know, I, just over the past couple of months, attending a lot of different sporting events, I don't know if anybody follows Harrison wrestling, but I'll tell you, an absolutely great program, well representing this entire area, but the state as a whole. They went to dual, the dual matches, dual state tournament recently, and did real well. And now, it will be into the individual wrestling events going forward. But if you have a chance, stop up and watch some of the wrestling. They have done an excellent job, excellent job, and they have for years, but, you know, it's exciting to watch. I do want to congratulate the two new police officers and the promotions. You know, they, they work hard on a day-in, day-out basis, and it's a great opportunity for them to be promoted within the department that they love and work hard for. And to bring two new officers in, I can't wait to get to know them a little bit more. Go to the Napa store. It's absolutely beautiful, and it's nice to see that spot filled in a, in a nice, updated facility. You know, they had that nice little store over on the opposite side of the street, but now they have a big fancy place, and it's nice. Real excited about the CIC. Glad to see that thing off and running. We had talked about it four years ago, and for it to finally be in place, that's what I do on a daily basis, work with small business customers, large business customers, and a lot of time, the facades and everything are the last thing because they're investing in their people and what's going on inside their stores. To have this available to update, excuse me, update the community or the outside of their structures is so important in what we're trying to achieve in that downtown district. So, it was really exciting, and congratulate Shannon and Bill working together, and the economic development team really getting that rolling going forward, so thank you. And then, last but not least, street guys, they rock. If you have the opportunity, get your cars off the street, get your cars off the street. It makes it a lot easier to drive that big old truck through there. I'm out there waving, offering coffee, but it gets too cold after a while, but obviously, if any of the guys are listening, feel free to stop by the house and get some coffee. But they do a great job, but it is easier if you stay the heck out of their way. So, take the time to get out of their way and get the cars off the streets if you can. But other than that, that's all I have, sir.
Thanks, Ryan. I have a lot of the same comments I had for Cindy, but it sounds like you just got a little touch that won't leave.
That darn cough will not go away.
I hope it gets away soon. But it's good to have you back, and I hope that the rest of your household, because I know it kind of traveled through the whole family there.
Yes, it has. Thank you, sir.
Mr. Lewis, do you have a report this evening?
Yes, I do. Thank you, Mayor. As you, as we all know, there were some police promotions at our last meeting and some new hires, but we've also exhausted our lists, so the Harrison Police Department is hiring still. There will be a civil service test for entry-level police officer will be given on March 3, 2018, at the Harrison Community Center, which is right here. Applications are now being accepted at the Harrison Community Center, Monday through Friday, between the hours of 9:00 AM and 3:30 PM until February 16th. There is an ad, which looks like this, that is posted, will be in the Harrison Press, on our city webpage, and on Facebook page. All applicants must be 21 years of age and a certified peace, Ohio Peace Officer to apply. And the next meeting for our police committee will be in two weeks, on February 20th, at 6:00 PM. That's all I have this evening, Mayor. Thank you.
You might note that the testing fee is $15.
Yeah.
And we only accept cash. So, when you come in to put your application and take the test, make sure you have $15 cash.
Yeah.
That's in the ad. I'm sure that it just got left out of the bullet points that marked.
Yeah. There's a couple more bullet points in the ad, so read through the ad if you're going to apply.
Mr. Dole, do you have a report this evening?
Yes, I do, Mr. Mayor. Thank you. Start off tonight with some good news for streets. We put in, oh, probably about a month ago, for a grant loan combination for the reconstruction of North Hill Street from Harrison Avenue up to Madison, and that has been approved. So, we're going to go ahead and get that rolling as quickly as possible. Hopefully, we can look forward to a fresh, reconstructed North Hill Street this summer. One of the other items from streets tonight, the Parks of Whitewater Homeowners Association had requested another stop sign and yield sign. We reviewed that. That'll be going to JMA for recommendations. Moving to the Utilities Committee, there's some maintenance going on at both the wastewater and water plants. Sand filters being replaced at the water plant. UV bulbs for the disinfection process are being replaced at the wastewater plant. We approved a technical proposal for GIS locating services and update and digitize city water and sewer lines on the map. That was the first proposal approved. Also, a proposal was approved for design services for an extension of city sewer. Then, we also looked on the Utilities Master Plan, there was a 5% water rate increase scheduled for 2017. We pushed off the increase last year and kept the rates the same as they are. Tonight, we voted to implement that 5% water rate increase. There'll be no increase in sewer rates at this time, and then we'll be able to take that money, and we'll be able to apply that towards our softening project. We also approved tonight, along with the water rate increase, to authorize the expenditure of those funds to apply for funding, additional grant funding for the softening. of those funds to apply for funding, additional grant funding for the softening project from the Ohio Public Works Commission. So, that was all part of the utilities commission tonight. Moving to the storm committee, the Biddlestorm Repair has been on the list to be done since last year. We did fall and drive last year, and we've been waiting for the funds to become available. The forecasts show that in March, we should be where we need to be funding-wise to get that job done. We're going to perform that in-house. So, we'll hopefully have that done before the big rains come in April. So, that, I believe, is all I've got tonight.
Thank you.
So, Ethan, can I just ask a quick question on that, on the rate increase? How do we manage communication so that we mitigate any calls coming to?
You're going to get calls, and you need to field those calls when they come, as will all the rest of us.
No, I'm not talking for us. I'm not talking for us fielding the calls. I'm talking the folks here.
That'll be the March bill.
Okay, so are we communicating that?
The March bill is when that rate increase will go out, and I believe there'll be a, a mailer, something will be stuffed in with that bill explaining it.
It'll actually, it'll be your February bill that you get.
In March.
Okay. Yeah, just want to make sure that we're, we're being proactive to make those communications so we can mitigate any calls in taxing the folks here, right?
Well, the, in 2013, there was an ordinance passed that provided for a 5% increase annually through, including 2018. We had a similar ordinance on the books for wastewater increases, and we regularly evaluate the need to implement the increase or to forego it. And last year, in 2017, we forewent the water increase. There was a prior year where we did not implement the wastewater increase. But with the softening project on the horizon, we felt the funds were necessary to be brought in, so the 5% increase is going to go.
And I'm not, yeah, I'm not challenged. I just want to make sure that we get ahead of it, so that we, we can, we can make sure that folks don't feel like we are trying to pass something by.
Sure.
You know, communication, communication, communication.
Urbano, we are so on top of this, that five of us up here have recordings set up that when the calls come in, they're redirected to the two newest members of council.
So, like it.
Where is my copy of the recording?
I'm not anymore, you are.
You're pushing it to our box.
It's all Persia.
Yes. I have my calls forwarded to you guys now. Good luck.
Perfect.
Do you have anything else this evening, Mr. Dole?
That should be it. Thank you.
Mr. Maines, do you have a report?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I do. Thank you. I'd like to thank Kathy for meeting with me before committee meetings and everything, just to kind of go over the purchase orders report and help me understand what she is putting out, so I know what I'm approving. And, you know, I just want to make a quick comment, that she really exemplifies every one of the city employees that I've had the privilege of working with here in the first month on the job. You know, helpful, thankful, witty, excited about their job, just, you know, whether that's Kathy, or Jim Leslie, or the fire chief, or the police chief, or anyone that I've run into, camera office on the, on the salt truck. I mean, everybody is just, you know, it just makes you excited to be working with this great group of people. And, of course, the council, they've been, and the mayor have all been good to work with. So, thank you, Kathy, for doing that. I want to thank Brian, oh, I want to thank Ryan for the invocation. The voice is struggling, and thanks for doing that tonight. If we ever have a situation where you're losing your voice and you can't do it, I'll step in and say a prayer. I definitely get on my knees when, on camp, on the day before, or the day of council meeting. And I hope that shows through in our actions, that we are up here, and we prayerfully consider what we say and what we do up here. Brian, thanks for coming out tonight. That meeting tomorrow night is, I'm triple booked tomorrow, but that one's on the top of the list. So, I'll be there first. I've got some ideas to bring, and then I'll go to my other two meetings, but yours comes first tomorrow. So, and we, you know what? Last, last year was not my first time coming up and talking, or being in this room, but you've got to be careful. You get up here and you start talking and getting involved, and then all of a sudden, you're sitting on this side of the desk, so.
Yeah, you're going to run in 2019? Is that what we heard? Yay!
Yeah, yeah. So, no, thanks for coming out today. We appreciate your enthusiasm. He's a great note-taker, so we need some of those on council.
Oh, yeah.
So, something to think about. And, again, the service events on my calendar, the meeting tomorrow night, I'll be there, and looking forward to it. We had IT committee meeting tonight, and we're, the IT committee is in the process of reviewing the contract with our provider for the city website, and we're going to be on a conference call with them to discuss the services and the charges, and see if we can't get a reduction in our fees and an improvement in our services, which is what we should expect from technology. It's getting better, faster, cheaper all the time. So, we're working on the website, got some folks looking at redesigning it. I know I've run into problems using the website, I think we all have, and so we're definitely looking at doing that. I know I talked to Shannon tonight, too. I've got a little bit of experience with that, so if they give me the back door, I can go in and add some edits and fix some things up for them. So, we're all getting involved in that, and I'm excited to be a part of the IT committee. We're also looking at our service provider, who provides the infrastructure and the telecom for the city, performing an audit, trying to find out what we have, what we don't have, make sure everything's tagged and marked, and that we have a good inventory, and our taxpayers know what we have, and we can look at what we're going to procure and deploy in the future. I think that is all I have from IT committee. Oh, one last thing. Our youngest council member celebrated a birthday this week. So, I, either he's 28 again, like Cindy, or he turned 28 for the first time.
I cannot believe.
I'm sorry, that was recent, that's 28 again. Mama Dole's. I want to wish Ethan Dole a happy birthday.
Hey, I'm the second youngest, just to let you know.
What's that?
I'm the second youngest.
We have a young group here on council. I think I was the oldest, Hank might be the old man, but I was the oldest man elected on council this year amongst this young group.
That's a compliment. Hank is wise.
Yep.
Like you.
Hank is wise, young at heart.
He is wise.
Dilly-dilly.
Dilly-dilly.
I meant to tease Ethan.
That's code for speed it up, there's a ballgame on.
Because he's 28, and, you know, I was trying to get Cindy to do her best. Nah, we won't go there.
No, don't go there.
Happy birthday, Ethan.
Happy birthday, Ethan.
Happy birthday, Ethan.
You old man.
That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Galindo, do you have a report this evening?
Yes, sir. So, before I get into the report, you know, everyone thanks everyone, and I'm going to tell you, one month in, I'm going to thank everybody sitting around this table. The amount of questions that you've fielded for me, the amount of mentorship, I ask a lot of questions. No one's ever pushed back on my questions. I'll continue to ask questions. So, I thank you guys for that, you know, the mentorship, the camaraderie, and, you know, some of the challenges that we have going, you know, as far as differences in philosophy. It's phenomenal, and, you know, I'm ecstatic to be a part of this, this table. Brian, thanks for coming out. I'll tell you what, it was 2013 when I, when I realized I wanted to move to Harrison, and it was at a community event. It was over at the community center, a Good Friday service with a bunch of different churches, and Chris Brown was the one that was officiating that, or opened that up. When I saw a community get involved, that's what made me say, this is where I want to be. So, we bought a house in 2014. So, I haven't been here quite as long as you, but, you know, I'm a firm believer in giving back, rolling up our sleeves and doing things. I believe that many hands make light work, and as we get out there and, and do things together, we can, we can do things phenomenally for this, phenomenally for this community. And thank you for, for your efforts in coming out. Mr. Tracy, good to see you out here. I'll tell you what, there is not an event I have been to that he has not been there. If you guys don't know, Mr. Tracy is everywhere. You know, I, when I first got here, I thought that this, they were naming the city Tracy, Ohio. But, good to see you out here. Patience. Absolutely. So, Mr. Mayor, we had met on the 27th of January for the emergency mitigation planning. I'll tell you what, the turnout was phenomenal. Firm believer in preparation. You practice how you play. You don't take anything for granted, chief. You did a phenomenal job. You, your staff, it was top-notch. We had some representatives out from Hamilton County. Chief Lindsay and his folks were there, first responders. I think it was a very good session where we were able to do a lot of brainstorming, throwing out ideas, especially, I mean, we have, we have an opportunity right now with new infrastructures of the school going up, to how do we get involved, and how do we plan and be proactive and be strategic? I think that sets the foundation of, of being strategic as, as a community, and honestly, we're as good as, as not only our infrastructure, but our, our emergency management planning and mitigation planning. I'm looking forward to doing many of those going forward. With that being said, few action items came out of that that we're, we're still going to be addressing. We're reviewing some of the, the plans, but great job, and hope to have these more frequently than just annually. I think it's something that we have to get in a regular cadence on. I firmly believe that great processes make mediocre individuals look stellar. And on the flip side of that, mediocre processes make stellar individuals look mediocre. And I think we, we have to put processes in place so that we are not dependent on intellectual capital, corporate knowledge, and we have to have plans, and we have to have mitigation contingency plans in place so that we operate with, with muscle memory from those types of planning, and that's something that probably just goes back to, to our training. But it was a great, a great event, and looking forward to more of them. We have not met as far as the, the plan, the building and plans yet. We will be setting something up shortly. I had to leave on emergency last week, so that's all I have, Mayor.